Start meeting, share letter, please enter your answer to follow by the pound or hash. Welcome to the Prince Edward County Conference Line, please stand by, you'll be joined in shortly.
I'd like to call the board supervisor meeting for the month of April to autumn. Dr. Pride, would you like to lead us?
Would everyone please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you, you join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
Do you have a have a conflict of interest?
Yes, sir.
Your recognitions?
Recognitions.
Recognitions is an opportunity for the board of supervisors to recognize achievements in our community with a focus on the accomplishments of students, employees, and our citizen volunteers to serve the county principle. This month we'd like to recognize Esther Jackson and Esther Buckner and Rob. Please come stand. Prince Edward County employee of the month for April 2025 is Esther Jackson. Esther was assigned to the county's community development office in March of 2023 through the Senior Community Service Employment Program, a community workplace job training program for older Americans, which is administered by STEPS. Esther serves and is an example to all of us, and we are fortunate to have such a delightful and valuable member on the community development team. She is always cheerful, willing, and ready. She completes all assignments on schedule and promptly raises questions to maintain projects assigned in a way. Esther exhibits an incredible level of happiness, she's equally worthy of new skills and qualified individuals. Congratulations to Esther and thank her for her dedication.
Congratulations.
That's really good work.
We would also like to finally congratulate Prince Edward County's February Team of the Month, Rodney Scott and Nathan Price, will they both come up? These canary rock stars supported the Piedmont Health District and numerous other agencies during their two-day venison stewing cooking in the canyon project. Over 800 quarts and 100-plus gallons of stew were cooked and canned and donated to the bases for distribution to those in need throughout our region. Nonior Abby Dean with the Piedmont Health District wrote, Rodney and Nathan were a great asset. They were knowledgeable and provided support and guidance in such a positive manner. These gentlemen shared a wealth of knowledge and were the backbone that made this project a success. Their work ethic, knowledge, professionalism, and willingness to lend their helping hand made Rodney and Nathan excellent employee of the month recipients. And this is the second time that Rodney has been nominated in the minority in the county recognition. Rodney is the only county employee so far to be recognized, so recognize.
Well.
Congratulations.
Well, here's your chair. When that will move on to page.
Sir, has anybody signed up, Lecter? And this is the second time that Rodney has been nominated in the minority in the county recognition. Rodney is the only county employee so far to be recognized, so recognize.
Well.
Congratulations.
Well, here's your chair. When that will move on to page.
Sir, has anybody signed up, Lecter? Mr. Chair, we have one individual signed up, Mr. Brian Stephan.
Yes, sir, just come up, state your name and where you live.
Congratulations.
Well, here's your chair. When that will move on to page.
Sir, has anybody signed up, Lecter? Mr. Chair, we have one individual signed up, Mr. Brian Stephan.
Yes, sir, just come up, state your name and where you live.
My name is Brian Stephan, address is 6038 Patrick Henry Highway in Maheron. My interest this evening was the canceled solar projects, and I have one question. Is there any reason that can be stated publicly other than the reason given request deferred by applicant?
I couldn't quite hear you, sir.
I'm sorry.
I got it, Mr. Chairman. So CP had requested, you know, the planning commission, I think, had made a recommendation on one for approval, one for denial, and they, based on that, they wanted to go back, I don't want to say go back to the drawing board, but go back and take a look at both applications. And they made the request, and typically we honor the request of the company to postpone the application.
That was all, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming. Okay, we'll go over to board supervisor comments, Mr. Gill.
Glad to see you everyone tonight, glad you came.
Dr. Pride?
Good evening, everyone in attendance, it's a pleasure to have you here, and we thank all of you for attending the meeting.
Hi, I go those sentiments, thanks so much for coming, and hope the rainfall was good for you as it was for most of the county, much needed.
Thank you for being here and holding us accountable for our partners who are here to to give us updates and and for everyone as we come together and and do the work of the county, we appreciate your voice and your input, so thank you for being here.
I'm glad everybody showed up, you brought some body heat, it wasn't too cool in here personally, all the bodies are warming up a little bit, so thank y'all for coming.
Good evening, I agree with the previous comments, thank you for being here for participating in your county's government to see how it works in person, thank you.
I'm just like the rest of them, thank you all, every each and every one for being here because this is your time to see what goes on here, it's also your time to keep us accountable and give us your opinion, thank you for being here.
Okay, we're going to do the approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to be approved as presented.
Second.
Supervisor Joe?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Dingus Hears? Patty Cooper?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now we have the business partner update, Mr. Matt Hurley, Fish and Pig.
Matt, come on up.
I want you to podium Matt now. Take that.
Bring my partner with me. Hello, everybody, and speak for Nash and myself, we appreciate the invite, we're not really sure where we need to go with this, but we're open for any questions you might have, or give us a little direction, but we're very honored to be invited here as a spotlight for the business, so we're all ears.
I will say, Mr. Chairman, you know, you guys are going through a big expansion right now, and certainly you've done so much locally, but maybe just talk about where y'all are going with the new locations.
Well, we, yeah. We haven't announced that yet. Well, listen, it's, we started here in Farmville in 2013, and Nash and I, when we started the Fish and Pig, we just, you know, we were very content and happy to have one restaurant, kept us plenty busy, and some old friends of ours approached us about opening our second restaurant in Wayne'sboro about four to five years after we opened, and we go, you know, what the heck, we can do another one, and Wayne'sboro led us to the Norfolk location, we opened a few years after that, and we just opened in Richmond in the Ensbroke area to make our fourth Fish and Pig, which we're really, really excited about, and we're hoping at the end of the, beginning of summer to open in Daleville, which is in the Roanoke area, and by the end of the summer, we hope to have a total of six Fish and Pigs running in the state of Virginia. So we're really, really honored and very thankful and very humbled by the fact that we've got that many Fish and Pigs that all started here in Farmville, so we're real proud of that.
How many people do you employ in the Farmville location?
We have about 70 for the Fish and Pig between the restaurant and catering, and so yes, and each restaurant averages about 50, you know, depending on the size, but Daleville's gonna be a really good size, I think Daleville will be close to 70 also.
Can you still use the original location for the catering, is that right?
All the restaurants are doing their own catering business, I mean, it's kind of like a hub, you know, the old Fish and Pig in Kingsville? We still kept that, we still have the lease going there, and a lot of our banquets and catering's done out of there, we're just the full-service restaurants here in town, and that's worked out real well for us, to have the good separation between the restaurant and catering, because catering is a real big part of our operations, and so it's gone real well for us.
It's good to see the truck sometimes.
Yeah, we we had the press club on the road today and the pig on the road today, so we passed each other going down Main Street today, so a lot of fun, so, you know, the town's been great to us, the support's been great, I mean, it's, you folks drive by and see the business that we're doing, it's, it's, you know, it's great for everybody involved, I mean, I know the meals tax are a nice little check we write every month, so, but again, we're very grateful for being here in Farmville.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Aron.
Do you have anybody?
Just like the.
Come on, Nash usually does the speaking. Well.
You have a question?
Thank you, chief. Well, I had my, I have to say, go back a little ways, because Matt came here from Memphis, and I grew up here, and as a matter of fact, Dr. Pride was not Dr. Pride at the time, and she was Mrs. Pride, and she was my 10th grade English teacher.
Oh, yes, I get so proud of you, Nash.
Yes, and she was one of my favorite people ever in school, and to this day, absolutely, so, we're, like, like Matt said, just to echo his sentiments, we're, we're so grateful to be able to have grown this business here with, with the support of the, of the county and of Farmville, I mean, gosh, we were with, we were out in the county longer than we've been in the town, so, you know, there's, we owe a lot to, to that as well, even though the roundabout drove us out of our location, but, no, but it's, you know, but in, in actuality, it's turned out to be a really good thing, I mean, it's not, it hasn't been, you know, it's, I think it's been a great improvement for the county, so, and again, you know, we just always want to thank everybody tremendously for supporting us in, in, you know, just coming to eat at the restaurants and doing all of the things that we've been able to do with lots of people's weddings and events and all the other things that we're, that we're able to, so, again, thank you guys from, from both of us.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are you related owners of the Wood and Iron Grill in Short Pump and other locations in Richmond?
No, we're not. No, we aren't.
It was told when I was there that it was part of Fish and Pig, the food is excellent.
That would be nice. They do really well.
They're trying to hitch their wagon to you.
Hey, I listen. My brother's actually running the Fish and Pig in the Richmond area for us.
Okay, thank you.
As you guys know, we're really leaning into the whole market in the community for weddings and events, and we've got a lot of new event facilities, and we appreciate having y'all as a catering option for folks, and I think there's still room for us to continue to grow that.
Sure.
It brings people to the community, it fills beds and hotels, and I think, you know, it's something we can do without having too much of an impact on the rest of the community, so, thank you for your support for that, and hopefully we'll continue to grow your business as well as those businesses.
Yes, that's great, thank you.
I would tell you, you all have not lived until you've seen Matt cook for like a basketball team all by himself. Never knew a man had seven arms before. I've seen that, it's amazing.
We thank y'all.
A bunch of seven-foot guys eating more food than you can make.
All right, any other questions? Anything else, guys?
I do enjoy to fish.
Thank you.
Well, thank y'all, thank y'all very much for having us.
Thank you.
Chief, go do the good work.
Thank you.
I taught you well, did.
Thank you.
Wonderful job, Nash.
Just think how good it'd be if they, if you taught the other one. They might, they might have the gene for the end of fishing, that's right.
Then we have, Dr. Cox, would you like to speak a little bit?
So I see that Matt and Nash just left, so I really hadn't had a chance to meet them, but I do have a Fish and Pig story I'd like to start off with if I could. So I was brand new here in October, and invited my family to come up one night, and actually we're from Colonial Heights, and when they came up, we had heard about the Fish and Pig, so we went and had a marvelous meal, but my youngest son fell in love with Bang Bang Shrimp, and so now I cannot get out of Farmville or Prince Edward without going to the Fish and Pig, getting Bang Bang Shrimp and taking it home, for all occasions, it doesn't really matter what it is, so, I really want to thank them for that, it's a great restaurant, they're, they're not only so friendly, but the food is great. So I just wanted to spend a minute, and first of all, I just really wanted to start with Doug Stanley, and just Doug, thank you for everything that you do for us, it's such a pleasure to work with you, it really is, and we've had an opportunity to work on a few different things, and I appreciate that, and to the board of supervisors, I certainly enjoy working with all of you when I get a chance to individually, but in particular collectively, and just want to thank you for everything that you do for the school division, and just, just your visibility and some of the things we've tried to do, in particular at the elementary school, we've really had a nice turnout, I think, to, to tour the learning cottages and different things like that, so we really thank you for that. And then I just kind of wanted to celebrate just a little bit, I think the first thing I wanted to say, and y'all already know this, I think, but the, the Prince Edward School Board prior to spring break made the selection for their new superintendent, and what an exciting choice, it really is, and I know Dr. Jones a little bit, or Chip a little bit, just from being a superintendent in different places, and he is so well thought of, and to get someone that has accomplished what he's already accomplished and is from Prince Edward, I just think is going to serve you well, so we're very excited about that. He starts July the 1st, I get to stay through June the 30th, and one of the things I'm really looking forward to, and I've said this to the school board, is that, is really working with him on transition, and just being sure that when July 1st comes, that we've done absolutely everything we can to make it a successful start for him, so that, so that's really good news. And then community partnerships, I really kind of wanted to highlight three things if I could, I think Doug said I had five minutes and that's, I'm not on the clock here, am I already? Okay, I appreciate that, okay, no, no, I'm good. So I think when we think about community partnerships, I just wanted to highlight three things. The first thing I wanted to highlight was our attendance incentives, because I think that's real important when you begin to think about chronic absenteeism and the kinds of things that go with that. We have a very robust program, but that program would not be as successful as it is without some of the community partners we have, and I never want to leave anyone out, but I think it is of note to, oh, first on the list, the Fish and Pig, how ironic, Longwood, Applebee's, McAdoo's, Papa John's, Main Street Lane, all of them have contributed as their others, so we're very, very appreciative of that, I think that's become a very successful program, something students really look forward to, and once again, you cannot do that without community partners. The second is I wanted to mention Longwood, because I have had an opportunity to work with them, and they have been so gracious, from the president to the dean to different people, and I'll just highlight one program, you could highlight quite a few, but one I had an opportunity to go to before spring break, and it's Lancer for the Day, and so basically what they had is they had our fourth grade there, and they not only have them there, they have them for a full day, they teach classes, of course, everybody's favorite's lunch, you know, that never changes when you're in school, and then they have a graduation ceremony at the end, and I thought it was very, very meaningful, and I think the idea is, is that for our students in Prince Edward to have an opportunity to be a part of that, maybe to see a little bit about in that venue what success can bring, and I understand they've done this for quite a few years, so that was very important, too. And the last thing that I wanted to mention was that the Virginia School Board Association has, and they can recognize many, many businesses in Farmville and Prince Edward, but they have recognized B&amp;M Greenhouse, we have several interested students that go there and work with them, quite a learning opportunity, they've recognized Haley Auto Mall, they've partnered with us for over two years, we have, we have students that go there and work, and finally, they have recognized Prince Edward Animal Shelter, and we have a partnership with them as well. So we want to thank all of them, I think one of the things that I have found here is that there's so many community partners that are willing not only to assist, but really think that education is such a meaningful and important thing, that they want to be a part of that, so I'm happy to answer any questions or anything that anyone has.
Thank you for your service to our community over the past months, facilitating this transition period, we greatly appreciate you being here and the leadership that you have provided.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I hope all of you have a great evening.
You do as well, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, we've got about six minutes by my watch, can't start the public hearing yet, if possible, can we skip ahead to item 12, which is the appropriation for ARPA Steps, Inc. Housing Project. 15, okay.
In the table pack, sorry.
18.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
On April 11, 2023, the board approved an appropriation in the amount of $100,000 from ARPA funding to assist in the creation of supportive housing to serve the needs of the homeless and families in the region. This appropriation was contingent upon a $75,000 match from the second-largest user of services, Nottaway County, which has been received by STEPS. So there's an appropriation for $100,000, approval for $100,000.
So again, the board approved that two years ago, we got it allocated in our ARPA funds, but since it's been two years, we really need y'all to reappropriate that to the budget and then make that authorization, also have Sean here from STEPS, Mr. Sean Rozier, who's Vice President of Housing, to answer any questions you might have.
I move the board of supervisors to approve and reappropriate the fiscal year 25 budget supplement as above outlined.
Second.
Mr. Emmett?
I'll say yes, because it's already been appropriated.
Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Yes for Bill Jenkins? Mr. Harris Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
And Mr. Gill?
Yes.
We still got time, Mr. Chair, if we could go to item 19?
Okay, 181.
181, that was in the table pack.
To enable the county of Prince Edward to meet the requirements of the Statement of Auditing Standards 115 issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants and provide guidance to external auditors on how they should communicate internal control related matters identified in their audit to an organization's financial statements, the staff is recommending the county engage professional accounting services to provide the pre-audit scope of work. Rodifer Moss provided this scope of service to the county for the previous year's audit and continues to provide the same scope of services to neighboring counties to include Lunenburg, Charlotte, Appomattox, and Cumberland. Their letter of engagement, which includes their scope of services and fee scheduled, is attached. Staff anticipate where they will start pre-audit services on or about June 1, 2025.
And I know they always talk about paying, you know, mileage, but they did almost all this work remotely this past year.
They've done everything remotely for the last couple of years.
I move that the board of supervisors approve hiring Rodifer Moss and authorize Mr. Stanley to execute the agreement.
I'll second.
Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Bill, yes? Supervisor Harris Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
And Supervisor Luke Gill?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll say item, the financial reports include two just county attorney invoices just wrapped caught up through August, I believe. filed caught up through August, I believe. And I think we've got two minutes, Robbie, but your introduction will take two minutes, Mr. Chair, if that works.
That'd be good.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, this is, we have two public hearings scheduled that is related to the same project. So the first part of this is potential rezoning from A1 to C1. This is filed by Anthony Q. and Tracy M. Ellington. The county received their request to amend the Prince Edward County zoning map and to rezone approximately 6.82 acres from A1 Agricultural Conservation to G, C1 General Commercial for the purpose of permitting a mini warehouse, also known as mini storage, by special use permit, which would be your second public hearing. This property is identified by Tax Map 040-A-23, located on the south side of US 460 Prince Edward Highway at its intersection with State Route 736, Piscatah Church Road. This public hearing was properly advertised in the Formal Herald in the March 26 and March 28 editions. Joining property owners were sent letters. You have a copy of which in your packet. Planning Commission held their advisory hearing on February 18, 2025. We had one speaker who spoke in opposition to the application. Ultimately, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request. Further to note, this parcel is contiguous to existing C1 General Commercial, and so this would not constitute spot zoning, since this is contiguous to existing commercial. The county is of the opinion that the use is generally compatible with the zoning district, and the rezoning of this parcel would be in harmony and would have minimal impact on surrounding properties such as traffic and noise. I'd be glad to answer any questions you all might have of me. The applicant is here to, and will probably speak on his behalf, and you can ask questions of him as well.
Do we have your questions?
While going over that, I see where the ingress and egress is different. Is that correct?
No, sir. It, it is the same as, it is different than the, the previous special use.
Correct.
But I can touch on that now. This site had a, was formerly had a special use, well, it still has an active special use permit for a campground. That campground has different traffic characteristics. VDOT's here to probably just explain some of that better than I can, but the, after looking, anytime we get an application for rezoning a special use permit, I get the applicant to go to VDOT first. The reason being, if there's a problem with ingress and egress, that could stop a project. No need to come here if we can't get proper entrance and exit. In looking at this, VDOT has taken a look at this a couple times, once before the Planning Commission meeting, and then at the recommendation of the Planning Commission, they looked at it again. So there would be a in, entrance only off of 460 and a exit left to come back to 460 on Piscatah Church Road. And I think maybe VDOT might could explain their position on that better than I can. I don't want to answer for them, but I know their, their access management, entrance spacing from active intersection is an important thing, and eliminating conflict points is also an important factor.
Scott, anything you want to add to that?
Come on up, Scott.
Well, I guess the Board is correct. It was approved previously, or the Board or the Planning Commission. I don't normally speak at these special permit, special use permit applications, but I'll start off by saying VDOT's pro-business, and we don't, I mean, all we control is access to the highway. If you guys approve a business to come in, then they're going to get access. And our role is to make sure it's the, you know, closest thing we can get to be imperfect by our standards. So we did take a second look at what the Planning Commission approved, and the first go around, when it was a campsite, it had a full entrance on Piscatah Church Road. And I could, I didn't review it back then, but I do remember there was a lot of conversation about whether to do a right in off of 460 back then, and it was ultimately decided then to do it on Piscatah Church Road as a full entrance. The Access Management Design Guide, which I brought with me tonight on page 110, has a diagram, and it shows spacing, and it, it even shows putting your entrance on the minor street, it calls it. In this case, 460 is the major street, and Piscatah Church Road's the minor street. But in that diagram, it calls out a minimum spacing from the back of the radius at the intersection to the back of the radius on the driveway at 225 feet. And this site on Piscatah Church Road doesn't have anywhere near that. It's more like 100 feet to about where the 35 mile per hour sign is. And that looks like the reasonable spot you would put the driveway on Piscatah Church Road. Like, we haven't seen the official plans yet, we've only got the concept plans. But if I was going to design the site, that's where I would put it. So that's sort of what we assumed would go there. So looking at all that, that, that corner clearance, they call it, that 225 feet, that's to have it where a car that slows down to turn in the entrance, somebody that turns on that minor street will see it in time and, and be able to slow down. And, you know, so that's, it's substandard, and that's a sweeping radius there on the Piscatah Church Road. And when I did a site visit, when I started reviewing this, I sat over by that telecommunications booth, and people that do turn up Piscatah Church Road do it what I would call almost full speed. It's just like it, the way the geometry is there, the roads, you just kind of want to come off 460 and shoot right up Piscatah Church Road. So if you had a vehicle slowing down to turn in there, VDOT was concerned about rear-end collisions. And then the design vehicle, which I assume is going to be some sort of moving truck for a storage facility, is, you know, if you've ever driven a truck of that size, which I'm sure some of the members of the Board have, to swing that turn, you're going to swing wide. So the other thing we're concerned about is head-on collisions, or somebody coming down Piscatah Church Road, somebody that is coming right off 460 swinging wide that they don't see till the last minute. So that's two things right there that led us to prefer the entrance of a right only off 460. And then the left out, you're only crossing that lane, which is less of an impact than if you're entering it. So that's how we landed on doing a left out to go down. Somebody comes in the site, does whatever they're doing on the site, and then they come out, make a left out, and then there's 460 with a median crossover at the intersection. They can go east or west. It's, to me, it's a very reasonable flow through the site. That's kind of the nuts and bolts of our, our review there. I'm trying to think if I've left anything out. So yeah, and then the other thing about the 460 right in, I think some people have been concerned about the high bridge trail crossing there. And it's, you can see it from almost the top of the hill by blue and gray, you can see down under that bridge. And in the concept plans I've seen, it shows using that same driveway where the telecommunications hub driveway is. So you have plenty of stopping site distance if somebody was to be turning in slow or stopped in the road there. You can see them from well in advance. And then there's also, thanks to it being 460, there's a second lane for a passing vehicle to, to pass by. So I feel like that's low risk for rear-end collisions there compared to the other things that I mentioned on Piscatah Church Road. So, and it, yeah, I mean, but like I was saying about the Access Management Design Standards, we, we would normally prefer the entrance to be on Piscatah, but this is a challenging site. And to, to do it in a manner that I would feel, you know, is most appropriate would be to, to have the right in on 460 and the left out on Piscatah. And there's, there's no way to have a left out on 460 due to that same overpass I was just talking about. At that telecommunications driveway, you really can't see with that concrete abutment right there to, to have a good exiting driveway. So that's another reason not to do a full access right in, right out on 460. There's bad site distance coming out of the driveway. And then if somebody was going to try to go westbound, it was what we call weaving maneuver, where you would cross in that short of a distance to get all the way to that median turnaround. So that, that really makes the left out on Piscatah Church Road better. So be right in only off 460 and left out on Piscatah. So I guess that's probably way more than you ever wanted to know about the access to the site, but that's.
But you did good. You're an engineer, you know?
Well, thank you.
I did good.
I can answer any questions you might have about it. Like I said, we're pro-business. It's, it's up to you guys if you approve the permits or not, but that's, you know, that's, that's access to the site that falls in line with our standards. So it's very permissible based on VDOT's review.
So if a person is going westbound on 460, they have to go to blue and gray and turn back?
Yes, sir. That's, that's, you'd be going westbound, you'd go up the hill where there is a left turn lane to turn by blue and gray. You'd wait in the turn lane, make a U-turn, and come back down.
And if you happen to have two or three people that have already turned in, and this next person is pulling a trailer, and he gets under that underpass and looks and says, "I've got to wait. My trailer's out in the road." What do we do then?
Well, like I was saying, you can see that from well in advance. It's, there's right-in, right-out driveways along 460 that do work.
There's no point with having to turn right and go in. What does he do? He goes back in circles again?
What would you do in that situation?
I would turn around and go back, or pull off on the other side of the road, sit and wait till it was clear.
Yeah.
I don't want anybody to run to me. I'm sitting in the middle of 460 with 60 mile an hour traffic coming at me.
Yeah. Well, the scenario you just described could just as easily happen at Piscatah if there's two or three people waiting to make that hairpin turn, and they back up into the road too.
But if you've got a driveway going in, you have more area for them to pull in. The length from.
Oh, the length of the driveway.
Off of 460 up and over is longer.
Yeah. Well, the, the third thing about the Piscatah entrance that I didn't mention is that tracking of the trailer wheels with that maneuver, I think you'll end up with people hung up in the ditch trying to turn in like that.
Your radius is shorter off of 460 than it is on Piscatah. The entrance.
Yeah, that's a long sweeping radius on 460 to Piscatah, but the driveway itself is going to be probably a similar radius to the 460 radius. Like I said, it's a challenging site, and I get what you're saying, it's 460. But there's, I mean, the, a similar place is the place that manufactures sheds, they have bigger trucks coming out. That's a right-in, right-out on 460, and I'm sure there's times where the driveway fills up there.
And that's probably all the trucks. That's probably all they get is trucks. Wilks you're speaking of?
It's westbound, it's where the animal.
Better built.
Better built sheds. That's, that's a similar driveway.
I guess my reason for bringing that up with, to, to the Board or to whomever is, page 86 is what I'm on, in case you're, in case you're wondering where I'm at, is a north exit the only thing that VDOT would give?
North exit, you mean on Piscatah?
Right, you have to go north.
Right, so like I was talking about rear-end collisions, and I, I said it's less of an impact to cross a lane than to enter a lane. If a design vehicle, like I said, I'm assuming it's a moving truck, was to turn right out on Piscatah, it's uphill grade, and they're going to be slow-moving, and that's where that rear-end collision component would come back in to play. Whereas if they just cross over and go down to the stop sign, they're, they're only crossing the lane. It's a short duration where they'll be in the, in the lane.
I guess that doesn't particularly answer my question. Is, is that the only scenario that VDOT will give, or do you, do you know, can you speak to that, Scott? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Well, I'm so, I guess that, like, we've only seen the concept plans. So normally, somebody can make any kind of plan they want, submit it to us for a review, and we'll review it and give comments back. I get, I mean, I feel like you're leading, and that you could have a left in on Piscatah. That's something that is possible, but.
Well, if, if you had a left in on Piscatah, then you would have a, you would have a right out also.
No, not necessarily. You, the.
But, but it would be a two-way, no, I, I, I'm with you.
There's, there's more than one way to do it.
It would be a two-way, right now, the way they have it set up is one-way only, which is, which is an egress.
Right.
But if you have an ingress and egress, and you can have a two-way, so you're going to have to widen that sweep on both sides.
Yes. I think I get what you're saying, be a two-lane driveway instead of a one-lane.
Correct, be a two-lane instead of, instead of a one.
Right.
Be an ingress and egress as well as.
Yes. So.
My, my whole, my whole reasoning for, for asking that is because I know that with an ingress or egress, either one, 460 scares me if you just go less than a quarter of a mile right up the road on the left. And I won't call exactly where it's at, but I think we all know there have been multiple accidents, and it's been a, a mess for I don't know how many years, and they've blocked the lane because of it, and the list goes on. We're already in an area that has a tremendous amount of traffic problems, and we can, I can get the sheriff to pull that or whatever else if we needed to do that, but that's a, that's an ugly area to begin with. If we can get traffic off of 460 either at Blue and Gray, if you were going westbound, you could come around behind Blue and Gray and come up and come in Piscatah, or you can come in beside THARP, or you can come in beside the fire department, or you can come in, there's, there's four different ways to get traffic off of 460 versus one. And that's, that's where I am with, and I'm, and maybe I, I should have asked the applicant or whomever beforehand before calling you up, Scott, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot.
So I think with, with everything you're saying there, I think you also have to weigh driver expectation in, which is very hard to predict, but I, I think having them come in any other way than right there on Piscatah, you're going to start with illegal movements. If you try to say, well, go all the way around the block and come in left in on Piscatah, the guy that's already followed his GPS there is going to try to make an illegal turn and cause problems.
Well, if it has ingress, egress, both, it can't be an illegal entrance there, no ma, no matter where he comes in, he'd still be.
But if you design it for right out.
I understand, I understand where you're coming from. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm changing the concept of it, and I was just asking, but I, I didn't realize that you all, I didn't realize this wasn't the final, and it hadn't come to you all as the final yet. That's my fault.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But, and, but like I was saying earlier, the concept that I've seen and have given notes on.
Sure.
Now, it's.
I've been living inside 460 all my life, and I like the way you got to take a right, get off the road.
Yeah.
Do your little business, come up Piscatah Church, and you're gone. It's so easy, because you, you move.
Right.
I liked the way you did that. What a good thing. That's my thing. I think it worked good. Because I don't want, I don't want any extra traffic going through, I think we've got enough going through there, you know, like turn to Blue and Gray and go all the way around.
And I.
That's too much.
The, the place right up the road that you were describing is, there's 14,000 vehicles a day on the main line there, and 7,000 of them turn off, so that's a lot of movements. I did bring the trip generation from the IT manual for this, if I haven't misplaced it by now. I think in the peak hour on a weekday, here it is, AM peak hour generation based on 186 units is, uh, looks like six, and the weekday PM peak hour is 10. That's very low volume. Anything under 50 is considered low-volume commercial, so that's, apples and oranges.
Well, that gives you, gives you a reference point to how many you expect. But once again, just like you said a minute ago, expectancy versus reality can be different, too.
Yes, sir.
That was just a question I had that the Board can think about or whatever. Thank you, Scott.
What's your numbers on 460?
14,000 right there.
14,000.
7,000 each way accordingly. Or 7,000 to turn off, 14,000 there.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the east side of Rice, 7,000. On the west side of Rice, it's 14,000.
Well, it's the same amount of traffic that goes to the Dollar General going by, and you turn in up there, and you pull out of there. So I don't see no problem with myself, this is me. I think it's well-designed. Ian? Ian?
Yeah.
No other questions, Mr. Chair? We don't want anybody signed up, but we do have to open the public hearing and allow for folks to comment. I'm assuming they want to comment as well.
Does anybody on the phone want to comment?
Nobody's on.
Anybody either present or online wish to comment?
No, I don't know.
Y'all went online? Nobody on the line? Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for having us tonight. I am Andy Ellington. For those who don't know me, I am the applicant. I am a little confused with this whole project as this project has already cost me a lot of extra money than I'd already planned, being that the, the original permit that I was granted for the campground, the entrance was approved off Pisgah Church Road. And now all of a sudden, thank goodness, Mr. Love had me go and revisit this before. I actually did the application to make sure that I could still get this egress and ingress the same as it was. It really shocked me to find out that it was going to be changed. Keep in mind, this, this is a low-volume business. You probably won't have maybe 15 cars a day, if that, entering this establishment and very few tractor trailers. I've watched storage units on 460 at Green Bay Road. I've watched storage units here in town. Very seldom do I see large tractor trailers. Yeah, you see U-Haul trucks, 20, 30 feet trucks coming in. But the amount of traffic that's going to be exiting 460, to not be able to have that entrance and exit off of Pisgah Church Road just really baffles me. I understand, talking to Scott, I mean, everybody's got rules and he's got the manual. But it, I think this thing would flow a whole lot better if we could have kept it with the entrance and exit off of Pisgah Church. And the last thing that I will say is, i- if it can't be changed, which I don't think it will be, there'll be an entrance off 460, a left only on Pisgah, I would, I would ask that they reconsider and at least allow traffic to turn right onto Pisgah instead of having to go down to 460 and go whichever way to come back into Rice. Dollar General, they allow their customers to go either way. You can leave Jenkins and go either way, come back into the village. Just to restrict the exit to a left turn only, I really disagree with. And is there any way that we could get that changed? I, I would ask for that to happen. Any questions of the board? Thank you.
Anybody else willing to speak tonight?
Open the hearing, Mr. Chair.
We'll get to close.
Okay. All right.
And again, just point out, this is for the rezoning, not the special use permit, so just try.
I move that the Board of Supervisors approved a request by Anthony Q. and Tracy M. Ellington to amend the Prince Edward County zoning map and rezone approximately 6.82 plus acres, plus or minus acres from A1 Agricultural Conservation to C1 General Commercial.
Second.
Supervisor Gillen?
I vote for the rezon.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes, rezoned.
Okay.
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the second part of this project is the consideration of a special use permit. Application received by Anthony Q. and Tracy M. Ellington for a request to have a mini storage facility on Tax Map Parcel 040-8-23, located on south side of US 460 at its intersection with Pisgah Church Road. This public hearing, like the last one, was properly advertised in a formal herald on March 26th and 28th. Joining property owners were notified with a letter, you have a copy of which in your packet. Planning Commission held their advisory hearing where no one spoke in opposition of the application. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the special use permit. They did. If you look at your minutes, requested VDOT reevaluate this before your meeting tonight, which they did. This request has been passed on to you. The purpose of this is to allow establishment of a mini storage facility. Planning Commission recommended 20 conditions, which you have in your packet. You have, and you have excerpt of the draft minutes. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have of me.
Any questions?
Also, I did note, I did send this, this application to DCR. There were no comments negative against this application from DCR, from, from the High Bridge.
Anything, Shaver?
Not in the public hearing, but.
Has, does anybody want to speak?
Yeah. Nobody's signed up, Mr. Chair.
No one's signed up. You go in close.
Yep, since, since the public, public hearing's closed, on page 94, this is just kind of a catch-up on number nine. All entrances, that should be to the site, S-I-T-E, not S-I-R-E, just, just while we're, because we're going to have to vote on this. Oh, that's not, that's just, no big deal. Page 95, number 10. I'm a little, little concerned that all internal roads for public access shall be compacted of earth and shall have a minimum four-inch stone and shall be paved with concrete, asphalt, or durable. I think that should be impervious service, is that correct?
Correct.
That should be impervious instead of pervious because it's, and on page 99, number 15. Robbie, can you just, can you just tell us what 4 dash? Let me get caught up in it, or you may be there already.
Oh.
The zoning, 4-20.3 and 4-200.5 and 0.7.
Yes, sir. Under, under the zoning ordinance, buffering and screening, when you have a, the, when you have a commercial use and a agricultural use, there shall be a difference in buffering. This would specify a combination of, of trees planted and, and have a, this was one thing we were doing in protection of the view sheet of the High Bridge Trail and specifically type C buffer, option buffer one gives them, it mandates tree planting is what that does.
Which if there's, if there's any question or anything from the board or the, anyone else, they do have to plant trees to kind of shield this from, from view.
If there is existing vegetation, that can count, count for it. That statement isn't, is in there, but if there's any gaps, there must be a fill-in on gaps to have that, that type C option one buffer.
That was my, that was my only question.
Yeah, and that's a standard evergreen.
Correct.
Quick, quick growing evergreen tree. We don't specifically call it a species, but we have the standards of the, the size of, of the height of it when it's planted and then maturity. So it gives them options, but the tree still must meet a minimum standard and then reach a certain standard.
I guess what I, what I would ask to the board is if the, if this was previously permitted with the ingress and egress off of Pisgah Church, is it still that way since, since we are not quote-unquote changing?
If, if I can interject, and I've, I've been here before. At the end of the day, VDOT controls the access to the site. We can't. The Board of Supervisors can get more restrictive. The Board of Supervisors, you know, could say, I don't want no access off 460. Then that puts the applicant in a difficult spot because then they've got to go back and negotiate with VDOT to try to get dual entrance way off Pisgah. But at the end of the day, VDOT controls ultimately what access is allowed to serve the use. So when they get to the final site plan, Mr. Ellington's going to have to sit down with his engineer and VDOT and try to negotiate that. Again, you can be more restrictive, but we can't be less restrictive. Yes, Robbie?
No, one point I want to make on that supervisor, Emmert, is whenever we have a change of use, and this was formerly a campground, a change of use or rezoning triggers a, a VDOT review and that's why I, I got those two, two together because you never know. The trip generation book, I've used it. It is differing based on what it, it has tables in it that tells what each use has, like for a gas station, it's so many trips per pump. In this case, mini storage is based on the number of units he puts in. If it was a larger site, it would generate more traffic, might even have a different standard, lesser, have a lesser standard. But I knew that intensity could be different.
Appreciate that.
I move that the Board of Supervisors approved a request by Anthony Q. and Tracy M. Ellington for a special use permit for the purpose of an establishment of a mini storage, a mini warehouse facility which replaces the existing special use permit for a campground with the following conditions. And I don't see them listed in.
You see, as amended by Supervisor Emmert earlier with those clarifications.
As amended by Supervisor Emmert earlier. Thank you.
Second. Supervisor Gillen?
What's your amendment, David?
Well, number one, my amendment was that the, to change, to just to fix the wording and that it would be impervious, it would be impervious and not pervious. And my amendment was that, that they could use Pisgah Church. That was my amendment.
Give me just a moment. Mr. Ellington. Your comment was that you were surprised about the change of the entrance and exit.
Yes, sir.
And your thoughts? And I remember a comment you made at the Planning Commission meeting about finance. Do you want our opportunity to go back and take another swing at this entrance or exit? Would that help you in what you want to do? I know that's a hard question and I put you on the spot, but I remember you made the comment a minute ago that you were surprised about this change.
It, it has already cost me additional money to go back to the drawing board. It's going to cost me additional money to put in two entrances instead of one.
You ought to be able to do that anyway. You ought to be able to, you know, whether we say yes or no, you, you can do that on your own if you like.
Yeah, I, I mean, like I said, I respect VDOT and I respect Scott. At the end of the day, I guess it's whatever they deem appropriate. But yeah, I, I mean, but if you're saying that, that if this is approved and I can go back and kind of work through that with Scott to maybe just get a right turn also on Pisgah Church, you know, we'll do what we've got to do.
Go back five years?
Yeah.
Point of clarification, just for, for the applicants. No, we've talked about this. For you all, we still go through site plan review. There's still a formal final site plan that comes from his engineer. That'll come to us, that'll come to VDOT. So that's going to happen. Now, what happens with that is going to be up to VDOT.
Got it.
So I just want to be clear on what, this concept plan can change. The number of units is a max. You've got the number of units in there, but his engineer will submit a final site plan, which will come to us. We'll also have a copy which goes to VDOT. Just want to be clear on, that's going to happen anyway. I just wanted you to, just to know that for a point of clarification.
At this time, what I see, I cannot vote for this. And in the back of my mind is safety. And I see an issue with safety here. So my vote is no.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
I'd vote yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins, yes? Ms. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Emmert?
I'm a no unless they can get that changed. So that's, that's where I am.
Okay.
But it passes anyway.
My, my comment is I certainly hope you can get something checked out, which I'm really worried about.
Thank you.
And then we're going to have doctors, committee, and Ms. Puckett.
I think she's coming.
You ready for me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. On page 117 is the Properties Committee report. The Properties Committee met April 1st. I think we had like a three and a half or so hour meeting. Thought it was very, very helpful. Anyway, the, the committee has a lot of things going on, but they brought two recommendations, or asked us to bring two recommendations to the board tonight. The first is to approve the purchase of newly rebuilt Compactor wheels from Compactor Wheel Corporation for a total cost of $45,900. The pictures on page 119 and 120, for those of you who have never seen, Compactor wheels with cleats, that's what those are. So I'm going to give an attaboy to, I'm going to say, our team on the Hill. So the board purchased the Compactor several years ago and as you see in that paragraph marked justification, currently our staff at the landfill is achieving a compaction rate of 1,920 pounds per cubic yard. County's average over the last couple of years was 1,831 cubic pounds per cubic yard and the industry average for a landfill of our size is about 1,600 pounds per cubic yard. So for every, and, and anybody who's met Jeff Jones knows how competitive he is about doing the best and having his team do the best. So he is very proud of the fact that they are achieving this significant compaction rate. And in talking with LaBella, they estimate that the landfill, the county is able to landfill 10 extra tons of waste for every 100 cubic yards of landfill space, which means that our employees are operating the landfill in a way to save the county taxpayers on both the cost of airspace and also the cost of operations. So we would ask you to consider the recommendation of the Properties Committee and also the attaboy to the, the team at the landfill on the Hill that is, is doing a really great job. The second recommendation is that STEPS has notified the county that their cost of recycling the paper, cardboard, and plastics will be increasing effective July 1. Paper and cardboard will increase from $28 to $60 per ton. Plastics will increase from 46 cents to $1 per ton. The cost of electronics will not change.
Per pound.
Oh, excuse me, per pound. The cost of electronics will not change. The Properties Committee discussed the county's options and recommends the board authorize the issuance of an RFP for recycling services to manage the removal, transportation, and disposition of paper, cardboard, plastic, and electronics recyclable materials from the Prince Edward County convenience sites. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
For no questions, I move that we accept the recommendation from the Properties Committee for the Compactor wheels and that we authorize the issuance of RFP for recycling services to manage removal, transportation, and disposition of paper, cardboard, plastic, and electronics recyclable materials from Prince Edward County convenience sites as recommended by the properties. With that, we did talk about the electronics, that if STEPS wanted to keep them, we would allow that. That, the jury's not here, but.
What we'll do is bring everything back, and it'll bring it back through the Properties Committee, Supervisor Emmert, and then probably have y'all review the proposals and make a recommendation back to the Board.
I'll second.
Okay, we have first Mr. Sucker. Mr. Gillen?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins, yes? Ms. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
And Supervisor Emmert?
Yes.
And now we have the county attorneys report. Ms. What, Ms. Wilson?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Glad to be here. This past month, I guess we've had some normal things of unclaimed body, and we had to follow up on the payment of that. We've had some Freedom of Information Act requests, some conflict of interest advisories, worked with Five Pillars on agreements that we've been working with and made sure they got executed and signed, and worked on the BZA appointment, and working on the Board of Equalization appointment, waiting till after an April 10th date for that. So, anybody have any questions, concerns?
Any questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
And now we have the county administrators.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Few items to hit on. First, at the suggestion of Vice Chair Jones, we have developed an online meeting summary, and we'll do so for each meeting moving forward. It's a link on our website, and we've got it on our Facebook page as well. So, you know, if anybody is interested...
Thank you, staff, for doing that. I've already received tremendous comments from satisfied citizens.
We appreciate the prompt and glad to make it happen. Reminder, Route 639, Millbank Road, VDOT has indicated they will have to replace a covert on Millbank. They're planning to close temporarily that road from April 7 to June 13. Fortunately, we don't have any school buses using that route. As the Board knows, we had received a deferral request from CP Solar on those two sites on Route 360. As a result, we canceled those public hearings, and we will see if they either come back in May or June. Health insurance, the county received its health insurance renewal this week for the next year, increases 6.6%, which is lower than earlier estimates, given that we'd had a couple of large claims this year. But we'll be able to cover the increase with the 5% plugged in the budget and the funding approved last year. CSA Coordinator Buckingham has hired a CSA coordinator that will be split between Prince Edward and Buckingham Counties pursuant to the MOU the Board had previously approved. The individual start on our first day will be April 16th, and Cheryl and I participated in the interview process. I've mentioned Five Pillars meets, they receive their certificate of occupancy on March 24th, and we'll keep you posted on the grand opening ceremony for that facility. Budget, the Board will hold a public hearing on the tax rates on April 15th and on the budget on April 22nd. Both meetings will start at 7:00 PM. Bright Speed lumos issues, county staff, Matt Wood Longwood, Hampton, Sidney, Farmville, and other locality representatives to talk about service issues with Bright Speed. The constant dropping of service is wreaking havoc with fire alarm systems, emergency dispatch, and customers. It was a good meeting. Locality's and the colleges were able to express frustration with impacts on our operations. Bright Speed seemed committed to at least improve the lines of communication as they invest in the system, and I appreciate Senator Cypher's for joining us at the meeting. Emergency radio system, as mentioned during budget discussions, the county lost its FY25 federal funding for the radio system when the budget was not approved. We had Senators Warner and Kane supporting the request for $1,695,000 in the proposed budget. Trey and I will work to get a budget submission in for FY26, and hopefully we'll be successful getting that included. That's all I have, unless there are any questions.
Any questions?
Supervisor Emmert, you want to make the motion? 125.
I move Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors convening closed session for the discussion and consideration of acquisition of real property for the public purpose of county solid waste management, where discussion, open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the county pursuant to exemption provided for in Section 2.2-3711 A3 of the Code of Virginia.
Second. Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Supervisor Gill?
Yes.
Supervisor Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Yes.
And Supervisor Dick, yes? At this time, we agree on the session. At the time?
You with us, ma'am?
Yes.
All right, I guess we need to, well, need to do a roll call vote, Mr. Chairman.
I agree. Okay. Two by him and Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two by Watson?
Yes.
Two by John?
Yes.
Dinkins, yes? Two by him?
Yes. I think he's probably with us in just a minute.
Do you want Patty for the certification?
I want Patty here for the certification. Ms. Patty, do you agree that we can return to open session?
Yes.
All right. Then whereas Prince Eric County Board of Supervisors has convened in closed session on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia certified by the Board that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia law were discussed in closed session to which the certification applies, and only such public matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the meeting of the Board.
Second.
Two by Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two by Watson?
Yes.
Two by John?
Yes.
Two by Gill?
Yes.
Two by Gill?
Yes.
Two by Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper John?
Yes.
And two by Emmett?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Senate, you like to pause for your financial reports?
Yeah, I made the motion, Bill had the second.
What about the variation?
He asked if there, Bill, you need to read the, is any member who believes there was departure from the requirements to call states such substance of the departure in this agreement taking place in the minutes shall be recorded?
No.
No, no for departure.
So roll call vote on that, right?
That's right.
The answer you're looking for is no.
No on the departure.
Two by Gill?
No.
Dr. Pratt?
No.
Two by Watson?
No.
Two by John?
No.
Two by Dinkins, no? Ms. Cooper John?
No.
Supervisor Emmert, no.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, everything else is just reports. At this point, we are ready to recess until Tuesday, April 15th at 7:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Two by Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two by Watson?
Yes.
Two by John?
Yes.
Two by Gill?
Yes.
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 April 15th at what time?
Seven.
Seven o'clock.
We don't need a 5:30, it's seven o'clock.
Do we have a planning commission meeting at 7:00 o'clock?
Bobby, we're not going to have one this month.
Not going to have one.
Away from our joint meeting. Casade.
Casade.
I don't have gotten to have one.
You don't have.
I'll be driving in from down.